I can drive.
Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a moment of silence, please. Michael, please.
Councilor Coast?
Here.
Councilor Shumpert?
Here.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Here.
Councilor Scott Stieritz?
Here.
Councilor Frye?
Here.
But Council President Stieritz is absent.
Thank you. And before we move on, we're gonna have an administration, a Minister of Oath of Office, and we're gonna start with our Clerk of Counsel, Andrea Gurken. Okay. You should raise your hand. I, Andrea Gurken?
I, Andrea Gurken?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of Ohio?
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter of the City of Waseon?
And the Charter of the City of Waseon.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Honestly?
Honestly.
And impartially?
And impartially.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of Clerk of Counsel?
Of the office of Clerk of Counsel?
For the City of Waseon?
For the City of Waseon.
State of Ohio?
State of Ohio.
During my continuance in said office?
During my continuance in said office.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Go around and shake hands and talk.
Okay. Go around the other way, yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And next, we have Caleb Torbit. Chief Torbit.
Okay. Raise your right hand. I, Caleb Torbit?
I, Caleb Torbit?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Constitution of the State of Ohio?
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter of the City of Waseon?
And the Charter of the City of Waseon.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially?
That I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially?
Discharge the duties of office of patrol officer?
Discharge the duties in the office of patrol officer?
For the City of Ohio, City of Waseon?
For the City of Waseon.
State of Ohio?
State of Ohio.
During continuance in said office?
During the continuance in said office.
Congratulations. You finished, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give you my bullets?
Not yet.
Congratulations. That's welcome, boy.
The bullets come later. He doesn't get done, he'll be here.
All right. Moving on. You've obviously the previous meeting minutes. If there are no corrections or amendments, the minutes will stand approved as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Do we have any individuals wishing to address counsel? I don't think we have anyone on the agenda. Okay, committee reports. Building and Grounds Committee.
Oh, that's me. I'm sorry, I'm Philip, prepared for it.
He's already on vacation.
Right. I got my tree commission. We, Building and Grounds met September, on the 18th, all members present. We had talked about giving a cell tower easement on Spangler property behind Rapid Tractor Parts. There was a little bit of, they were offering us a thousand dollar, one-time deal for the easement, and Jeff at Sturts had thought it was worth more than that, so they agreed to a three thousand dollar, one-time thing. So... That will go into a recommendation from Building and Grounds to give them that easement. We also discussed the Pond and Enterprise Avenue. We're still talking about it. The cost of digging it deeper was, we all thought was way astronomically too high to do something like that, so we're still talking about, hoping to do about that. No action was taken on that. And then we also approved the police and fire department renovation. The, to have it updated. And to sell out the... The bidding process. And so that was also one of the recommendations.
So...
I move that the recommendations both be accepted.
Second. Any discussion at all on any of these recommendations?
Councilor Coast?
Yes.
Councilor Shumpert?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Scott Stieritz?
Yes.
Councilor Frye?
Yes.
Five a's, zero n's, motion passes.
Chief Commissioner, that's you, too.
Tree Commission met September 20th. Jim Spees expressed some concerns on trees on private property that has potential hazards to another property, but not public property. I told him that I had some form letters that could be sent to them, but nothing could be required of them to do so. We talked about a couple minority makeles in Rear Park that are not looking good. One of them looks, has died, and it's kind of one of those things in the state of Ohio that we're starting to see some of those minority makeles die like that, kind of midsummer. Tom, you might want to talk more about this, but Kimmel reported a grant that has been approved for the Homecoming Parks Woods. And one of the requirements was to have a chainsaw safety course, and we're looking at to host that course sometime in October or November. And we were also given an elm tree seedling that came from a large elm tree that had extension, extensive damage, but survived the Oklahoma City bombing. Larry Frye, because it's such a small seedling, planted it in public horse property until we, until it's large enough to be transplanted in the site that has yet to be determined. And Jim Spees has given the plaque to Walt Lang for the Booster of the Year. He donated seven chestnut trees that have been planted. So I don't think we have any recommendations.
I know we had lost a couple of the trees in Rear Park?
Right.
Also, and there was probably about four or five on Ariki that they thought they lost, but those were just shedding, they said that happens on like a, I don't know, four or five-year rotation.
As possible. It kind of depends on what kind of tree it is.
Right, and it was, it was just that tree. They had called that in and said that that's what it was, and that's a natural thing that happens, so...
Are you talking about the elms?
No, it was minority makeles.
Yeah.
At Rear Park, I'm not sure what you're talking about on Ariki Street.
On Ariki Street, and I'm not sure if it was an, I don't think it was an elm. It was, I don't know what kind of tree it was, but all of it, just the whole trunk, all of the bark came off, and they called it in, and they thought they were all dead, and actually they found out that it's just something that they do.
What kind of?
Well, John Arbs came down and looked at it, and he said, "Yeah, that's what they do." So it was a good thing they weren't dead. But the two in the park, one was hit by lightning and the other one was...
Yeah, the one that was hit by lightning shouldn't have come down, should have came down last winter, but weather didn't cooperate with it.
Right. Okay. So no action on those. Moving on to department head reports. Chief Slater?
Fire Department, this is October, and it's Fire Safety Month, and next week is specifically Fire Safety Week. And we've got a full month of tours and school programs we'll be putting on, and activities that we'll be helping some teachers out with, and so we'll be out and about the community with the full slate of activities for the month. And as you can see, as part of the council business, we have the bidding process slated there, and I have to go over the bid specs yet with Dennis, since his return from vacation, and get a couple tweaks to those to make sure everything falls in place. That, that process will be started here, hopefully very soon. And then this Friday is... Homecoming football again. And there'll be a small amount of fireworks that'll be there for the Stars Band and Banner at the beginning of the game, and then after the game.
Well, that's exciting. You guys ready to do those?
Yes, we will.
Very exciting. That's always nice, though.
And then I forgot to mention before, counsel, when I spoke to you earlier, but I have a sports memo with my son, if I could slide on that here, if there's any other business for the Fire Department, if anybody had any questions.
You're good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chief?
The chili cook-off was, went over very well. It was a devastating win for the Police Department. By a massive one vote. We appreciate that last-minute vote coming in to take this over.
Take the people all to the hospital and eat your chili.
As long as they voted before they went to the hospital, it was good. This week is National Coffee with the Cop Week. November, or October 4th, from 7 to 8, which is this Wednesday, we will be doing a Coffee with the Cop at Circle K and commemorate, along with about 600 other departments will be doing it sometime during that week throughout the country. It'll be at the Circle K North Shute, the one that's used to be Dairy Mark for those old timers. And it's the one in the Ace Plant. Since we have three, I need to verify which one that is. Our Drug Takeback Day will be coming up, the end of this month. October 28th, from 10 to 2. We'll be doing that again at Rite Aid and Walmart, as well as here at the Police Department. As always, you can still bring your prescription medication, just the pills, up to our office anytime, and dispose of them beforehand, or you can wait until the 28th and drop them off at one of those two sites. And finally, we are presently working on writing a JAG LE grant. And we're hoping to replace our records management server, as well as a, one of the computers at Dispatch that's still running on Windows 7. So we're hoping to get it on the ground. If not, that would probably be in my capital improvements for next year, as we need to get that replaced. And that is it?
Thank you. Welcome back, Dennis. Your desk was very full when you got back, I'm sure.
Gurken's has been in town, they are still in town, working on the, finishing up the paving. Technically, they're a couple days, two or three days late to get finished, but I'm not gonna press that issue. We've only got a couple small stretches to go. Pool project's still going well. Superior water line repair is done. As far as the main line is concerned, it's passed its inspections and so on, and guys began working on switching the taps over to the, to the new line today, so... It should probably take them the rest of this week, or maybe a couple days into next week, to get that all wrapped up. And work to get the trenches filled in, and some ash fall down by winter time. Work also continues on the budget. A little late from Jamie's deadline, but I think everybody's a little late, so keep working towards that. And I guess when we get to legislation that concerns my stuff, I can take questions at that point, huh?
Jamie couldn't be here, but she did hand over her audit report that she got back, and I just wanted to read to counsel. She had another congratulations. Based upon your recently completed financial audit, it gives me great pleasure to inform you that the City of Waseon has received the Audit of State Award. Clean and accurate record-keeping are the foundation for good government. Taxpayers can take pride in your commitment to accountability. The Auditor of State Award is given to those entities that file timely financial reports in accordance with GAAP, as well as receive a clean audit report. The clean audit report means that your financial audit did not contain findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, single audit findings, or any question asked. So we did really well. Congratulations again on receiving the Audit of State Award. So, from David, Dave Yost. She did well. And I told her that we could wait and let her display this, but of course she said no. So I wanted to make sure that counsel was aware that she received that. And also, she wanted to report that income revenue is up a little over 6%. That is her report of findings. You're up.
Well, there's a bevy of legislation for counsel's consideration this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions as well, if we get there. I will be, next week I guess, working with Dennis on looking at the legal documentation supporting the easement grant for the cell tower, and then the situation with the ODOTs building. I guess, just to invite counsel this evening at 6 o'clock. Your chariot awaits you at the, at the Homecoming Park to take you on the grand tour through the woods. I hope you all can make it. We've got Paul Andre lined up, the narrator, to tell you about the woods, and then Ed will be driving his tractor, air conditioning.
Mike Farrows, so that I can be there, too.
Yeah, good, we invite our friends of INTV. And then, of course, Dave, if you want to join, we'd be happy to have you come along. We have a special seat reserved for you. It's the best seat. Seriously, it should be, it only takes about 30 minutes. It'll be, I think you'll enjoy it, it's good weather out there. And also, I guess, just to finish that thought, the first large race was held at the park in the woods last Tuesday, and I think everything went well. Good attendance, five teams were there. I don't think we heard of any parking issues. I gotta sort of circle back and talk to the folks from the school, but it all seemed to go pretty well. So, looking forward to the League Meet, which is sometime, I think, mid to late October. There'll be eight teams out there.
October 14th.
October 14th, not that far away. Two weeks?
Week from center.
Okay.
Sounds like you have that mark written.
Yes, I do.
Yes, I'm sure you do.
At least the first one, so we make sure that it goes through.
I mean, I'm hearing from the runners, Tom, I don't know about you, that it not being an extremely fast course. I mean, is that, have you heard that at all?
Only to the extent that it was like 90 degrees on...
I know, yeah, that might have something to do with it, too, but...
Other than that, I think it's pretty flat, but I haven't heard that either way.
Could they tell the difference of going into the woods?
Is that what you're hearing?
That's what I'm hearing, yeah, it's a little bit of a slow course. You know, not a bunch of PRs coming out of it, so... Each course comes with its reputation.
Yeah.
So who knows? It's early, yeah.
Yeah, well, the kids, I was talking to one of the coaches afterwards from one of the other schools, and he indicated that the splits were pretty regular, except for the point when they came out of the woods the first time and had to run in the heat after being in the woods for a half a mile. Ran, run into the, the whole park. I think that's kind of a, be hard if you're running. You're in the shade, and you gotta go run in the heat, 90-degree heat for...
It was a hot day.
Yeah. Anyway, so that's, that's what I have. We'll look forward to those students to make it over.
I like seeing the neighbors come out and sitting in the grassy areas and watching. I thought that was kind of cool, you know, that they want to watch that. Maybe they'll see more of that, too. Community being a part of it. And also with the chili, it was ungodly hot, 90-plus, and Waseon still came out and ate chili on that hot day. So they definitely supported the Waseon Chili Festival, so hats off to, to the citizens of Waseon for that. Who would've known that the end of September would've been 90-plus degrees? So, that's a good one.
And Barbara Caper's now in the water, does appreciate the mayor's award that he received for best chili.
There's no money changing.
When I picked it, I said, "Oh, I can't believe I chose though."
Hey, we were the people's second choice.
Yes, you were.
We had the people with the puppies.
Puppies always won.
No, not market, Tom, no, not market.
Moving on to legislation, let's move on. First reading. Resolution 2017-16. Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for the construction of fire department sleeping quarters and police department offices in the administration building. Accept the lowest and best bid. Enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder. I thought he said he was gonna take questions.
Yeah.
First reading.
Second.
Motion moved by Counselor Coast and seconded by Counselor Shumpert. Is there any discussion? Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Shumpert?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Scott Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Five a's, zero n's, motion passes.
Resolution 2017-18. Authorizing the mayor to enter and access the Utilities Eastman Agreement with Tillman Infrastructure House. First reading? Wait a minute, wait a minute. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I guess there's some concern that some of the councils will be out of town the next week, and there's some need to move with some degree of speed on Resolution 2017-18 and 2017-21. Dennis has suggested that perhaps counsel consider moving Resolution 2017-18 on suspension, which would make it effective to pass on 30 days from today's date.
On suspension? Or emergency?
Suspension.
Just suspension.
Suspension?
Yeah, it doesn't qualify for emergency.
Any discussion, counsel?
I saw a move that we put it on suspension. Second.
Any other discussion regarding the matter?
So we're 2017-18, right?
Yes.
The one that we rounded up. Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Shumpert?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Five a's, zero n's, motion carries. And it'll be on suspension.
You need final passage?
Yeah.
Final passage.
Second.
Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Shumpert?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Okay, five a's, zero n's?
Okay, then 19 on suspension also?
No.
21?
Yeah.
21 on suspension, and 21? And 21 will be on suspension. Okay, moving on to Resolution 2017-19. Authorizing the mayor to issue a request for qualifications for an engineer.
First reading. Second.
Any discussion? Moved by Counselor Shumpert, seconded by Counselor Stieritz. Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Shumpert?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stieritz?
Yes.
And Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Five a's, zero n's, motion carries.
Resolution 2017-20. Authorizing the Public Service Director to advertise for bids for the refuse franchise. Authorizing the mayor or her designated to accept the lowest and best bidder bid, and to enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder, and declare an emergency.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and declare emergency on Resolution 2017-20. Second.
Okay.
There's no more discussion on it? No, okay. Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Shumpert?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stieritz?
Yes.
And Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Five a's, zero n's, motion carries.
Final passage. Second.
Moved by Counselor Shumpert, seconded by Counselor Stieritz. Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Shumpert?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stieritz?
Yes.
And Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Five a's, zero n's, motion carries. On emergency, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Suspension.
21 on suspension.
Yeah.
Okay, Resolution 2017-21. Authorizing the mayor to enter in a purchase contract and license agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Transportation for certain property located at the corner of North Shute Avenue and Limpfoot Street, and this will be on suspension.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Shumpert and seconded by Counselor Coast. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Shumpert?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
I guess, hold that thought. Have you been shown the agreement?
Yeah, we have drafts.
That we've seen?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, they're approved. Pardon me?
When?
That counsel has seen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I guess not.
Just, they just came in. When did that come in? Last...
The day before I left.
Yeah, the day before you left.
Pretty cool.
Right. It was very quick that it came in. We met with, what was his name?
What? We're talking about ODOT.
So was anything changed? There was discussion about it, but anything changed?
No, they're gonna, they're blocking out where the Mark, Mark's Tower sits. They will keep that. That'll be a last split, that's in the process of being approved, regional planning. They basically got everything out of there. We met with the new county head person. And gonna do a walkthrough as far as stuff they're leaving and, or want to leave. If we don't want it, they'll, they'll remove what we don't agree to take. They have to have internet service to run their Mark's Tower. That's in the agreement, they will provide that, and that's, that's not an issue. Essentially, we get it for a dollar bill.
Somebody told me that there might be some soil sample might be considered.
No, they provided both Phase 1 and Phase 2 documentation of environmental cleanliness.
That had to be done before we could take it. That was, that was part of the reason that we had to wait.
You think all of the works can make good use of this space?
Some of it. Also, there'll be discussions with the school system. They're really interested in the mechanic shop, part of it. And maybe even some space in the main building, because they're currently having at least space to work on school lessons.
I know the Police Department also was talking about...
It'll be a perfect location for public safety, somewhere down the road.
So as far as final use, who's gonna do what with it, that's a little bit up in the air, but...
But after this resolution, we would have ownership after 30 days, based upon the suspension, right?
It'd be authorizing the mayor to sign the documents, so it may not be the... She'd be authorized in 30 days to sign the documents, but...
But we're giving our blessing to the purchase.
Yeah, yes.
Sorry about it in breaks, I'm gonna...
No, that's okay.
No, that's all right.
Is, is there any, anything that the state is requiring, so we don't own it anymore five years from now?
Without going into the legal language of it, essentially, as long as it remains a public use facility, in other words, as long as we have it or the school is using part of it, they're fine for a dollar bill. If the city down the road would ever sell it to a private individual, the state will receive the purchase price, it won't be, it won't have to go up.
And is there a amount of time on that, or is that just forever?
No, I think it's. I think it's perpetual.
Yeah, I think it's.
So it was school, county, city?
As long as it's public.
Public utility.
Oh, with those explanations, I'm comfortable with proceeding.
Need to ask the two remaining councils, I think you.
Three of us.
Shane.
I think you got it.
All right, Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Five a's, zero n's, motion passes.
Final passage.
Second. Moved by Counselor Shamp and seconded by Counselor Coast. Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Shamp?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stieritz?
Yes.
And Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Five a's, zero n's, motion passes. Okay, third reading, Resolution two thousand seventeen dash fifteen, accepting the recommendations of the revolving loan fund committee and authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Wausau Machine and Manufacturing. Third reading?
Second.
Any discussion on the matter? Moved by Counselor Coast and seconded by Counselor Frye? Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Shamp?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stieritz?
Yes.
And Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Five a's, zero n's, motion passes. Any business, council?
I just want to ask, answer a real quick question about the ADA ramps. Will they be out in that process?
You just passed legislation authorizing the bidding process, so that's gotta wait for thirty days from last meeting before that goes. And likely, it'll be more beneficial to bid that out in the dead of winter with the spring start at this point.
Thank you.
And one more question for that.
Yes.
Is there any painting associated with the pavement process that's going on, like painting of the middle line, or, or is there?
No.
No, okay.
Only as the.
That's it? Are they?
Maybe ours or their?
Ours to do.
Are they getting it?
Okay.
Something the city would take care of independent from Gherkins?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Oh, yeah, we have all of those stamps. All right. Any other questions? Okay, can we have a motion to approve the bills? Go on.
That's second.
Moved by Counselor Coast, seconded by Counselor Chamberlain, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have a motion for adjournment. So. Motion for adjournment moved by Counselor Coast and seconded by Counselor Frye, all in favor?
Aye.
That was quick.